Could you please stand and say the flag of allegiance to?
I will.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen.
All right, Shelley, roll call.
Becky Curtis.
Here.
Gina Reed Hibbler.
Here.
John Ruckridge.
Here.
Karen Hamlin.
Here.
John Feiger.
Here.
All right, this brings us to our first public participation. If you have something you'd like to talk to us about, or tell us, please come to the front, be sure and put your name and address down, and speak into the microphone in five That takes us to our consent agenda. Shelley.
Item A, motion to approve the minutes of the May 20th, 2024 regular session. Item B, motion to approve the minutes of the May 23rd, 2024 special session. Item C, motion to approve annual liquor license renewals for Shell Travel Center and Right Choice.
Do I have any request to move items from the agenda to the regular agenda for discussion? Very well, I will entertain a motion to pass a consent agenda. Come on. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Five in favor, zero opposed. That moves us on to the appointments. Shelley.
We have appointments to review tonight for the park board. The park board met on May 24th. They recommended the reappointment of Matt Vaughn and Matt Hart, and they have new appointments to fill the vacancies of Julie Osmus and Kristen Bates. If there are no objections, these will appear on the next agenda for decision.
Okay. So that means that we'll have the full board now?
Yep.
All right, that moves us on to the manager's report. Steve.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I had two items on there. First item is we've had many of the roads being repaid in the city. A lot of people have called us and thanked us, and some people are wondering why there's so much disruption on the road, but we're working on that. And I'm going to ask Ted Wilson to come up and give us a rundown on that.
Please. You can sign off your song.
Well, they have my contact mode on, but the paving is done. They still have to strike BB Highway and Grand Avenue West, too. It is untraceable, I'm not sure, but other than that, everything is complete. I'm on board.
Okay, and they don't have any more new roads to pave, if you will say this correctly. Okay, any questions on the roads there?
All right. I was just trying to look at the B-B Road. Working good.
Yeah.
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 So I'm going to talk about Modot Drive, roads, but I'm going to ask a question about our roads, if that's okay?
Sure.
Okay, so I know we're working on Northwood Drive, and what else are we working on? Is that it?
That's it, right.
And are we going to be doing any resurfacing?
Yes.
Okay.
It's the Blue Sim and that subdivision off Grand, and that's what I've got planned. The sub basis is good. The issue is it's very flat in there. There's not enough crown road, so the top surface is just tearing. So if we get the right crown in the road, then everything will be good.
I suppose we'll be looking forward to that, seeing that. Okay, super. Wondering about?
And one thing a lot of people don't know is which roads are and which ones are Modot's. This is a good way to see it because there's one that is done now, all the ones that they don't have. Okay, and the second thing is, I remind everybody, we have the goal-setting session next Thursday, June 13th, and we'll be doing that, that will be all day. We'll be across the street at Third Street Fusion, and I will get a draft to pack out for everybody this weekend, so you can take a look at that. Okay, any other questions?
Any questions?
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Steve. That moves us on to unfinished business. Are we going to have the audit presentation?
No, we will not. We've had some limited communication with our auditor, and he has not requested any further documentation, but we have not received any reports as of this time.
Okay, it's supposed to be your last Thursday. All right, so that means we're just going to keep waiting. All right, that takes us on to our unfinished business, our second and final reading of Bill 2024-25. Shelley.
Bill 2024-25, an ordinance authorizing an agreement between the City of Cameron, Missouri, and Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for State Lot Grant Project 23-013A-1, providing for airport improvements at the Cameron Memorial Airport.
I want to take a motion to pass Bill 2024-25 on a second and final reading by roll call.
Seven.
Discussion. Shelley.
Gina Reed Hibbler.
Yes.
John Ruckridge.
Yes.
Karen Hamlin.
Yes.
John Feiger.
Yes.
Becky Curtis.
Yes.
That moves us on to our second and final reading by roll call on Bill 2024-26. Shelley.
Bill 2024-26, an ordinance for the City of Cameron, Missouri, authorizing a conditional use permit for Joshua Shaw Brandless LLC to operate a storage warehouse in a C-in neighborhood commercial district at 1005 West Third Street.
I want to entertain a motion to pass Bill 2024-26 on a second and final reading by roll call. Come on. Discussion. Shelley.
John Ruckridge.
Yes.
Karen Hamlin.
Yes.
John Feiger.
Yes.
Becky Curtis.
Yes.
Gina Reed Hibbler.
Yes.
That moves us on to new business, volunteer annexation. Parker Landis.
We did receive annexation requests. We requested the parties that owned the roadway to fill out a voluntary annexation request. They both did. This is for the roadway that matches up to the property owned by T.A. Trump Stop. So it's just the roadway. The next step is for council to send it to planning and zoning for review. So I just need a motion second and a vote to send it to planning and zoning. Once they approve it, it will come back to council for a public hearing, and then we'll go over there.
So this road belongs to them? Is that what I'm understanding, if they're saying they annexed?
Yeah, it's the roadway in front of their properties, and we're just annexing the roadway, not the property.
No, I knew that, but I just didn't know we were, I never held the road before, so I guess that's a part of it.
Yeah, there should be a map in there that was, yeah.
Third. I just thought that was the main issue.
So there's, you know, this is just the road?
Yeah, it's just the road. As it sits right now, half of the roadway is annexed and half of the roadway is not.
So this is not a resolution, this is what?
This is just, it's just a motion second and a vote. Does that it? To send it to planning and zoning.
So I want to entertain a motion to send this to planning and zoning. Come on.
Second.
All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Five in favor, zero opposed. Passes.
Thank you very much.
All right, that takes us to our first reading today, Bill 2024-27. Shelley.
Bill 2024-27, an ordinance for the City of Cameron, Missouri, authorizing a change in zoning district classification for property owned by Christopher Etaney Graham for an agricultural district to R1 single-family district.
I want to entertain a motion to pass, first reading, Bill 2024-27.
Should we? Should we? Yes.
Discussion.
Okay, we'll ask Michael to talk about that more, sorry. Building inspector.
All right, that was a property on E-Highway that was voluntarily annexed into the city limits, and this is just to take it from agricultural district to R1 single-family. There were some issues that were brought to our attention with the septic on the property. Right now, with it being, well, before it was annexed, I guess, we couldn't do anything about it. Now that it's being annexed into the city limits, now we can handle that and hopefully get that under control. That's really how I have on that.
What do you mean, under control?
Well, we can make them fix their issues, basically, I guess. This is what I'm saying, because we have rules against having septic, especially leaching out of a property if that's the case.
So they're going to have to tap into our city, or do we tap into them?
They'll have to tap into our properties.
Any other questions?
Is there any reason why they didn't do that all at once when they annexed it, or is it just a process? You annex it first, and then you change it?
As far as the district being changed?
Uh huh.
Not yet, it's just a separate thing.
Okay.
I think every time we annex something, does it automatically come in as agricultural?
So every time something is annexed into the city, it comes in with whatever, Clinton County, or Cab, or Caldwell-Hudson zone, as most of the council members are aware, most of the properties surrounding Cameron that would be annexed in, use agricultural. At some points, some cities will do rezonings and annexations at the exact same time. However, it's my position that that is not valid, because you don't technically have any legal authority to zone or hold a public hearing in front of the planning commission until the property is within the corporate city limits. So that is, this is the process that the city follows, where it's annexed, and subsequently, after a recommendation is made by the planning commission, we need it through the annexation process, then once it is fully annexed, we do go back and rezone it out from typically annexed to residential or commercial.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I just wanted, so were they aware of the septic, the fact that there was going to be a cost that they would future request this?
My understanding, I don't know if that makes her for sure, my understanding is the neighbors were aware, because they came in and let us know about it, and we, who started all this, were. Yeah. So, yeah, and again, we don't have any evidence of that, so we can't say whether it's true or false, so at this point, until somebody makes a complaint, says, hey, look, there's, and we can see visual evidence, then.
Sure.
It's kind of around that.
And maybe that's why they annexed it. I mean, this might be a deeper solution, and then we do another septic.
Right.
I don't know.
I think we had that, we had a stop, you know, a couple of years ago.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. All those in favor of passing Bill 2024-27 on a first read? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes, five in favor, zero opposed. That moves us to our resolution today. Resolution 2024-21. Shelley.
Resolution 2024-21, a resolution authorizing the city manager to accept her proposal from Snyder and Associates to complete a demolition plan with shared wall considerations for 112 East Third Street.
I want to entertain a motion to pass Resolution 2024-21. Come on.
Second.
Discussion.
Okay, I'm going to start out a little bit then, and ask Michael to come up and help me out a little bit on that. This is the building that is across the alley from us, that's been falling down for the last year or so. We have a court order to have the building designed for repair or to be demolished within a certain period of time. The owner did not do that, and did not follow through, and did not come back to us and tell us what to do, so we're going to have to follow through with the demolition. In order to do that, we need to get a demolition plan, and that is what this starts that process through. And the problem is, it's, why do we have to do that? Why is it our responsibility to do that? Well, the answer is because it's a public safety issue, and you've got a building that already fall down, and remains true, if somebody does do it, and run that risk of doing it, it will fall apart. We do it. I understand that we have to do that, but we're the ones who are stuck with it. Michael, you want to talk a little about what Snyder's doing then?
Yeah, like I said, it's just a plan to bring the building down safely and waterproof, the, what will be the exterior of the building next door, so that's what this is for.
Yeah, that's the issue, the shared wall.
Yep.
Can you go over that a little bit?
Like I said, it's a shared wall, I mean, it's, we want to bring it down safely, so we're not messing up the building, the neighbors' building itself, so.
Are they going to have to some of this cost, if it's shared?
Well, what happens is, we have asked Lance to begin talking to them and see what things we can, what agreements we might make with them, what they'd like to do with that. Right there, at this stage, it is our responsibility, but if they talk about maybe wanting to do something, that's a lot of work in that discussion.
So the people that own it right now, then, after we tear it down, then, is theirs, is their property?
Yeah, what happens is, they still have the property, and so what we do is, we end up putting a tax lien on it, and it would go for three years, and I'm sure they wouldn't pay tax on it, he wouldn't pay the tax on it, so it would be sold as a building option.
Okay.
This is actually just a plan?
Yeah, this is just a plan, this is a plan, this is a, and that can answer your question, Karen, what happens to it during a limited time? That's why the mayor and the crew talked about doing something earlier, maybe somebody could buy that and go ahead and do something with it rather than sit for three years as a vacant lot in the parking lot.
They know that you've asked, and I've talked to them a few times about it, but now they're going to have to start making some decisions, because things are starting to happen, and so, because they have owned it, then we probably try to sell it.
Yeah, yes, we could try to do that, see if the current owner would be willing to sell it. That would be a good plan, if we could do that, if we've not been able to.
So why did we decide on Snyder?
As far as.
As far as Snyder, why did we pick Snyder?
Honestly, I was thrown into this, this was something for me, so.
Oh, okay.
We do have a short list. I was wondering if we're engineers for this type of thing. Jim put it together a couple of years ago, so for smaller projects like this, we do have.
They've already been vetted, vetted in some, I just want to make sure everybody else made that. Any other questions?
And this is the cost of this, 24,000 is what it's going to cost us to tear that building?
No, that's just the plan.
Oh, no! No!
That's the engineering plan.
Yep.
And then if you look.
That's what you asked for.
Yes. What you have, if you look at the next page, back to the proposal, it's $8,000 for the demolition plan, $12,000 to figure out how you fix that wall, so that the shared wall is not going to come down, and it's changed from a shared wall to an outside wall, and then $4,000 prepares a bid document, so we can send it out as a bid, have a company going to do that.
And then below it, it says, city will handle advertising and bidding process.
Well, when I said wall modifications, I thought that was what it cost to take care of that shared wall, so, guess we're done.
So what was it, once we're told, said, we get an 85, 90 grand, and we're going to make a call, 60 grand, right now? We can have any, I imagine, or any of these things.
Oh, yes, yes, we could. And had that with other things we had.
I tell you, it's not.
Yeah, that's why I say, this is a dreadful situation, constructive, it's why it's better if you get the owners to maintain the building pretty long, so we don't have to go into their long ones.
It's called city inspection.
Yes.
All right, any other questions? To Michael. All right, thank you, Michael. All those in favor of passing Resolution 2024-21, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes, five in favor, zero opposed. Now that moves us on to Resolution 2024-22. Shelley.
Resolution 2024-22, a resolution, it says ordinance, I will fix it. Now, I started with an ordinance. A resolution authorizing the city manager of the City of Cameron to enter into a professional services agreement with PST Engineering for emergency work regarding moisture intrusion, mold and air quality, and building damage investigation at Cameron City Hall.
I want to entertain a motion to pass Resolution 2024-22. Come on.
Second.
Discussion.
Okay, Mayor, Council, this is a direct follow-up on the previous item we got, because we have these problems with this building. We have the bricks in the front, we have the foundation, we have the roof, we have mold, and so we have to maintain our building the same as other people. And how has it gotten to this situation? Well, maybe this is because in previous years, we haven't done what needs to be done. Now what happens is, we've got those things happening right now. We have to move some people out of their offices, because the roads are leaky in the offices. We have the issue of mold and health hazards in this building, and so it is our responsibility to do something for this building in the same way you look at other people who do it for their building. And it's an expensive operation, and we have started out at the very beginning of it with PST, we began to work on this building, and Michael, you can go ahead and tell them where we are now.
Okay, so we had a roofing company come out today, drill a couple holes in the roof to check, just to see if holes are there and underneath from memory. Tomorrow, we're going to have the air quality and mold guys come in and check the air quality and mold, and do some investigative work. There'll be another group of guys coming out on Friday to do more work on the exterior of the building, and they're going to cut into the whole, break into the building into five different places to check for mold, and, you know, any sort of damage they might find, just to give us an overall health report of this building, so. That's kind of what this is about, there's, they're going to be installing some air scrubbers, and we need to look in all, above all the ceiling tiles, looking for, of course, water intrusion, mold, anything like that, that's going to cause health or safety concerns in this building, so.
And there was some discussion that maybe we would not be able to start this until, I think, the 24th of the month, but Michael was able to get back with them, and if we start it right now, they can start, and so they started actually today to do that. We've got liability issues, and we've also got health issues. We're not sure where that's going to lead, but we'll know here by the end of the week, probably.
And please tell me this, 125,000, I'm 46, it's just not the study?
It's a study.
No!
Yeah.
It costs a lot of money, we find out stuff.
Yes.
Well, I'm in the wrong business.
They're obviously, it's $200 a gallon.
Well, I saw, I saw, 400, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, my God.
But what they're going to do is, this will be the testing as well, so we're going to find out what is necessary or can be done. And the final, the final expenses to this building will be various.
And have we checked in the insurance?
Yes, we have, and.
He said that.
And there's two steps to this. I've got that in front of me, and we have the items that are excluded from our insurance, and I'll read three sentences on that. One, normal wear and tear, deterioration, gradually developing conditions, erosion, inherent vice or latent defect. Another one is damage caused directly or indirectly by the presence, growth, proliferation, spread, or any activity of mold, fungus, wet, or dry rot, bacteria, or virus. And the third one says, continuous or repeated seepage, leakages, or flow of water that occurs over a period of four, four weeks, days or more. Those things are all excluded from the insurance. But now, we did have a couple of good questions, and I will go back and follow up on that, because maybe there was some damage, some pituitary damage or something early on that they could call and cause it, and we'll go back and investigate to see if it's any possibility of getting more insurance on it.
And as far as the building goes, you know, our guys who did their study, did they look at the blueprints when Copeland built this and did the additions to see if there was any error, or they cut corners or anything?
Yes, we did that, and Patrick, if you could answer, we went back to see if there's anything we could go back to, what property did you find in it?
We found that one, the contract that would typically contain provisions that would protect the city in this instance, and due, when the building was constructed, those were excluded from that standard form contract.
And what about the statute of limitations on the city?
There is also the statute of limitations at issue where this building was constructed over 20 years ago, and the statute of limitations for certain contracts is 10 years.
And even if they do something, did something wrong, has that been a limitation? Have they kicked it in?
There is the argument that we should have discovered it due to the fact that we were inspecting the construction.
That's because nobody's been taking, it's not.
Our watch list.
The city council was not caring about this building. That has never been a part of their vision. They've just used it and just let it deteriorate, all of us, all city councils.
2011, I bet, it was like, you told me, 2011, they needed to do something.
They just did not do their due diligence, and that's just one thing I have to say. Whoever out there in the future that comes on city council, please do your due diligence, because we are no different than any other citizen, we need to take care of our buildings, because this is what happens.
I remember years ago, our few had a problem with mold in the building. But I don't remember the reason of all that mess, but, yeah, this is just negligence, and sadly deciding, we are the ones who are going to, you are the ones that are having to pay for this. So we accept this.
Now, in terms of paying for it, we do have about three quarters of a million dollars still left in ARCA funds, which is a possibility that we can start out with this payment immediately with using ARCA funds, so it's not a budgetary issue for us right now. Right?
Right.
We did really want all those funds to go to City Hall, that's why we haven't spent them, because we knew that was looming in the background, so it looks like it might chew it all up. Any other questions? Kind of a hard to fill as well, isn't it?
And what we do, 50% of this is a initial retainer.
Yeah, but we don't get that.
All right.
Not what we learned stuff here.
I guess.
They're professionals, we know that.
Uh huh.
All right. All those in favor of passing Resolution 2024-22, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Five in favor, zero opposed. That takes us to our second public participation. Anyone who'd like to talk to us, please come up to the podium, write your name and number, please speak into the microphone in five minutes. All right. That moves us on to miscellaneous comments from the staff. Steve.
I have nothing more, thank you, Mayor.
Michael.
I have nothing, thank you. I have nothing at this time.
Lance, before we do that, maybe you might have some comments on what's coming up on the 4th of July?
Oh, yes, like I said.
Yeah, I'll update everybody on that.
So Steve and I went and met with, we met with Gina, as well as the old school group yesterday, today, at 11:15. So we're moving forward with the fire wash program, and we're getting everything together. We're also making sure that all of our permits are in place, our insurances are there, as well as working with Mike, because he was nice enough to be there with us, and he's helping us out with that, with our department, and so we are making headway to get that all done as quick as possible, well before the 4th of July. So we finished our firework, they wrote a check today, it was pretty happy, it was fine, and so that way, they're split up, because there's two different groups that are running everything.
So this is one of those odd years, because the 4th of July occurred on Thursday, so they have fireworks at night, so it'll be over about 11 o'clock, so that we clean up after that, and then the next day is regular business day.
Don't you just love it?
Mm-hmm.
And so, between working on that and then, and going through files, and just learning what I think you learn on the way, the processes of Cameron, and Shelley's been. the way, the processes of Cameron, which has been nice enough to help me with doing that, as well as the rest of the staff. So I'm trying to catch up and learn as much as possible so I can move forward as well as Mike helping me out with the planning and zoning. And so, we're in the end we go. And if you have any questions or comments, I've got my cards over here that I'll give out because they're in now. And I can give you all my cards so you guys can have them for your convenience and follow me with any questions. So I'm here to try to move things forward and help everyone in every way I can. So, thank you all.
Ted?
I just got one thing, a large trash pickup that's gonna be June 29th, that's a Saturday across from the PD again.
Who's gonna be doing, I mean, who's, our last year, it was, Tim's been doing it for the last few years. Who, who puts these staffs that'll be doing that this year?
I'll probably have one with the street department guys running the backhoe to load the heavier stuff into the.
Yeah, but it takes two people to check everybody's stuff. I'm one of them, I wouldn't want to do that.
I can, I can do that.
Okay, well, I'll be there. That's my thing, get rid of trash.
And where's it at again?
It's in the empty lot across from the PD.
Oh, PD, perfect. How about with FD too?
Our party, our.
Public safety building.
It's in the parking lot, yeah. We shouldn't tell the scrappers. Somehow people are gonna find out, is it in their June, their June, city calendar?
It's on the calendar.
Okay.
You have to make your go, yeah.
No, I haven't.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, thank you Ted.
Nothing, very thank you.
Okay. Steve? Martha? Councilman?
Nothing.
Shelley?
The Memorial Day fires of the cemeteries need to be picked up by this Friday, the 7th. The city is working, the city staff is working with Ali Vet Clinic to have a pet vaccination clinic here at city hall tomorrow from 5 to 7. I love the information for that in front of you guys. We are currently taking applications for communication officers, dispatchers at the police department, facility maintenance person and a customer service clerk. We do have full staff right at the moment, but when the customer service clerk, she's put in her too, we've noticed when she's gone. Until we get somebody in there, we may have some days where we have to close the lobby for lunch or for half a day or something, just so that we have plenty of people. On a normal day, we'd be fine, but we need to have people who have planned vacations and whatnot. So if we run short, we might have to do some gentrifying.
Hey, I need help with my office, why don't you guys come and, I wish I could shut them, you guys are a staff. Alright, Karen?
Sorry, I told you to sign with your comment.
Oh, no, I'm, thank you very much, I don't know why I didn't do that. I just want you to know I'm busy all the time.
That's rude.
No, I'm not.
That's it. John? John?
I just happened to notice that Bill Jackson is, because I'm retired from the park for about 32 years and I just wanted to give a shout out to him. I believe he worked way back when my mom was over there, which was long time ago. He was over there with her and 32 years, so it must be a long time. Just wanted to thank him for those years of dedication. And then there was one little quick thing, and Steve and I talked about this a little bit in our meeting. I understand that there's been some, we haven't been doing the puppies on roll that we get, that we used to do. And I was just thinking in different ways that we could get some of those dogs and cats adopted and get around with the hamper actor. And I was just thinking, maybe we could do something like pooch pictures, like again, something like that. They have, they have, just take some pictures, give it out there on the city website.
I think they are, they have a website, I think they're on Pet, they're on Pet Finder. Yeah, they're on Pet Finder.
But we need to get them, because people are being, I'm saying, get it out there for people.
Well, actually, you can Google pets, adult pet from Cameron, I believe that's.
Well, I just, I just know that from a standpoint, that's gonna be better than that man is wanting. Because I've seen it all, I'm not the only one that doesn't know, because people are always asking. So, and I don't, also, I'm asking. Anyway, just an idea, I'd like to put it out there and say we do something.
Gina? Yes, I was meeting with Rebecca from that school and then I was there, we have a May 3 and so also we're trying to build a coalition so that we have lots and lots of participants in the 4th of July meeting and that everybody's involved and everybody wants to play this political eye over. And if somebody wants to sponsor a May show, then you can call me.
Doesn't promise they can do that.
Well, they have it for a future, and it's working good and bad, so. Anyway, we'll be making phone calls, if you get it, don't call from me, pick it up.
Yeah. We have other things to.
Have you contacted, have you contacted the other guys? Because farmers used to do, maybe another guy can do it. Well, I think we have a lead on the May show.
Well, we got sororities used to do it too.
Right.
Do we sell a sorority?
Huh?
Do we sell a sorority?
Well, there are, there used to be six, but when we dropped out, there's five.
Yeah, well, and one thing, okay, Kat, haven't they? I, we wouldn't ask Kat if you do the adoptive pet thing, one of the, the July celebration thing, so. So hopefully we'll get some of those little four-legged friends out there at that time.
Alright, thank you. I don't really have anything to say, except go over sure and make sure you bring your trash on the 29th. Eight o'clock to noon?
Yes.
Okay. We love what our roads look like, we love pulling into town and it looks really nice and it looks like we're a little nice town. So, that's all I have. So we will, I will ask for a motion to adjourn into a second, we have a second, correct?
Yeah.
Into a second.
Karen Hamlin.
Yeah.
John Feiger.
Yes.
Becky Curtis.
Yes.
Gina Reeckettler.
Yes.
John Brenderdahl.
Yes.